Good evening. Thank you for coming on this 90-degree weather evening, although it doesn't seem like it's 90 in here, which is good. So I'm going to start with my explanation. I would imagine most of you are new to this, so I will explain the whole procedure and make it as painless as possible. The City of Peabody zoning board of appeals meets tonight in accordance with Massachusetts general laws, Chapter 40A, and other applicable laws. Tonight's hearing will be conducted in the following manner. The secretary will read the legal notice or state that such a notice has been waived. All applications will be heard in the order they were received in the city clerk's office or as otherwise designated by the chair, and we are going to read here everything tonight in order. The petition or petitioners representative will present the subject application to the board. The chair may limit the length of all remarks. All parties in interest will be given an opportunity to speak either in favor or in opposition to a pending application, and the board may receive similar written communications to be placed on the public record. The petitioner will be given the opportunity to refute any such remarks. So now I will explain all of that. Say you are number two. The secretary will read your petition. Your petition is what you are here for, and they will also read your name and address. You will then come to the podium, and you will also then state your name and address for the record. And then you, or your attorney, or your builder, or your representative, will give us the lowdown on why you're here, why you want the variance. And then we will, the board will ask you a few questions, if we have any, and then I will say to the audience, is there anybody here that would like to speak in favor of this petition? And if you have any neighbors, because those would be the people that would be here in favor, they come up to the podium, one by one, state their name and address for the record, and tell us what wonderful neighbors you are, and they have no problem with the addition you want to build, and that's great. And then I say, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak in opposition? And here's where it gets a little tricky. If this is a very controversial matter, and you have 15 neighbors that are here tonight to speak in opposition, that's fine. Everybody gets a chance to speak. Come up to the podium, one by one, family by family, state your name and address for the record. Things we do not care about or do not concern ourselves with are, you are against this addition or porch or whatever it is, garage for your neighbor because they have a barking dog. We also don't care that they haven't invited you to swim in their pool, and that's why you're opposed. And you're probably thinking, really, she's not serious, but I'm serious, because we get some of these reasons. We also don't care that the son has a motorcycle and rubs it up at 3:00 a.m. You are here for dimensional relief, and we need to stick to that subject. So things like, it's too close to your property line, and you can give us some reasons why that bothers you, or there's, you think there's going to be a water problem because of the water table, that's fine, but please stick to the subject. If in fact you go off track, and I get it, and we also don't care how long you've lived in Peabody. That really doesn't have any bearing on a variance. I'll do this, and you'll know to stop, but we're very respectful. This is a very fear board. In comparison to other towns and cities around, we are very, very, very fear and very open to the variances. But the zoning board, the zoning rules and regulations, please remember, are meant to be abided by. So that being said, once everybody is done talking, and you go back to your seat, you, the petitioner, can come back to the podium and refute anything that you disagree with. Also, if there are a multitude of people that want to speak against this petition, and the first seven people have said it all, you can just come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and say, I agree with the first seven people. We really don't have to hear it over and over again. And once you're in your seat, please, you don't speak out. Don't speak out from your seat, because that's not allowed either. And that does happen. As much as I say it, it happens every time. Let's just talk a tiny bit about hardship. You're here for a variance, and I don't mean to be so blunt about this, but you're here for a variance because you have a hardship on your property. Not just because you want it. We all want to build at some point something, an addition, or we need a garage, or we need a farmer's porch. You just, you want to beautify your property. We all understand that, but it really does need to, there needs to be some hardship there for us to approve it. Or what's, what's, what could be a hardship? The example I used last month was, you have, you have a house, and you want to build an addition because you have a growing family on the right side of your house. There happens to be a brook. Somehow there's a brook on the right side of your house. We can't build there. That's a hardship. You have to build on the left side, and you don't have enough room, so you come to us for a variance. We will give you dimensional relief, hopefully, and to build. On a couple of other points. In conclusion, a hardship is not just ordinary inconvenience or difficulty, and the owner must be able to show that there is an inability to make reasonable use of the land. It's also not a self-created hardship. Believe it or not, we've had people that actually create a hardship. Guess what? We can figure that out. So that doesn't fly either. And a variance is not a free pass from regulations or a tool to subvert the zoning ordinances. And I just have to make that perfectly clear, because you're new to this, and I think that you should have a clear understanding of what exactly is going on. After all of this, we then take a vote. The board votes yes or no, obviously. The decision is then typed and filed with the city clerk, and once the decision is filed with the city clerk, there is a 20-day appeal period. Our clerk, Ms. McGrath, will, you have that written out, right? She has papers written out, 20-day appeal. You can't do anything if you're approved for 20 days, and that even includes weekends. So we're good with that. And she will give you a paper explaining that. In compliance with the open meeting law, this hearing is also being recorded stenographically by our clerk. Please speak directly into the microphone clearly, and only speak when at the podium to ensure that you are on the record. And this will probably be the last time I say this, because I think by now everybody should know. We also are on Channel 9. We are now on public access television. So Mr. McHugh will be here at any point. We are going to start, and we are going to start with number one, the continued application, which we do not have to read for the record. So who is representing?
Jeff.
Mr. Attorney Kelty? I don't know, Jack, are you with, are you coming up tonight or what? Okay, number one, Attorney Kelty, are you in the building, Attorney Kelty?
Thank you very much. My name is John Kelty. I'm an attorney. I have offices at 40 Lowell Street in Peabody, Mass. I appear this evening on behalf of Rodolfo Florencio, and we are seeking a variance to develop the property at 10 and 1/2 Winter Street. We had been here two meetings ago, not your last meeting, but the meeting, the meeting prior to that. Since then, we have had the opportunity to meet with at least one of our neighbors. Those are the neighbors to our right, if you are facing the property. We are in an R4 zoning district. As such, our lot is immediately too small to be developed in an R4 zoning district. We're proposing a duplex where there was formally at least a duplex, and there's some evidence that it might have been a three-family. The current owner of the property, Mr. Stephen Callis, tore the property down. His intention was to use it commercially. He was told that he could not use it commercially, even though the adjacent properties to the very right of our property are commercially zoned, industrially zoned. So he has put the property on the market. My client, Rodolfo, is interested in developing a two-family. We have met with the neighbor to our right. Our intention is to continue to build the two-family. We took it from four feet to eight feet off the right side yard. So where I've asked for a four-foot variance, we're now asking that that be eight rather than four. We took the building that we were originally proposing to be a duplex with side-by-side units. In narrowing it, we're now doing a two-family, which will be one on top of the other. There will still be parking beneath the dwelling units, and we're hopeful that the board would grant our variance this evening. The other change is that we were formally seeking a variance to allow for 36% lot coverage. We're now asking that we be 29% lot coverage. So we no longer need that particular variance. The only variance that we're asking is lot area and the side yard of eight feet rather than four feet. Oh, and I'm sorry, frontage. We are still asking for frontage, because the zoning district requires 75 feet, and we are now asking for 37. That's the size of the lot. We're asking for 38, 3,810 square feet. And so the remainder of the advertisement that had appeared in the paper is now we're at eight feet in the side yard versus four feet, and we're at 29%, so we don't need the lot coverage variance. Happy to answer any questions that the board may have. We do need to take this matter to the conservation commission inasmuch as we are in a floodplain,
If I could, through the chair. I went down and looked at the property, and I really tried hard to see the advantages of allowing a duplex at that location. And I'm going to be honest with you. It would be like squeezing it in with a shoehorn. That's the only thing I could think of. There's absolutely, there's a brick building to the right, there's an existing two-family to the left, and there's just like no room for anything else. It would just be like squeeze, and you just, it's just too many dimensional shortcomings, I guess. I don't know, I know any other word to put it. Is, is you, we don't even come close to any of it. Where's the driveway? Through you to, Jack, the driveways is...
Driveways are straight on with parking beneath the building. And then there's another opportunity to pass on the left, because there is a right way shared with our neighbor to the left, and you can get to the rear of the premises for additional parking.
Yeah, you know, and I'll be honest with you. I don't have any questions. I just have that it's just too much to try to put in there. I think the problem was the owners had one purpose in mind, couldn't do it, so now he's trying to get out of it the best he could, and I can certainly understand that. But there's, to me, there's just not enough room to put a house. So I'm not going to be in favor of this, because I did drive by the property. I really tried. I tried to picture what it would look like, and I really couldn't see good things happening there. So I just think you're coming to us for too much relief, for a multiple family unit that I just don't think fits in there. Thank you.
So could I ask a question? So is the sense that a single family would be permissible? I mean, our problem is that we're in an R4 zoning district, which is completely ridiculous when you have a 3,810 square foot lot to be zoned R4. And it's quite likely that a single-family home would actually be very similar in the footprint. It just wouldn't have the second, you know, unit above.
Or the density, right?
Pardon?
Or the density. I mean, how many people, I mean, you're going to be able to put twice as many people, obviously, into that duplex, yeah.
Into a two-family, yes, yes. Arguably, that's the case.
And that's really my problem, is what, what could happen there? And I don't see good things there. And maybe that's not a great reason, but, you know, the ordinance is the ordinance, and you just, nothing seems to fit. I can't see a good thing happening there, so. I really tried, but I just think it's too much. A single family? I'd consider it. You know, we, the board would consider anything. You know, we have to consider anything, but for a multifamily, I know it's R4, but it's just squeezing too much into the room that's just not there. And I wish, I wish the owner could recoup his glasses, or, you know, but I don't think this is the way to do it. Thank you.
Through the chair. Attorney Kelty, when was the property purchased by the applicant?
By the applicant, it has not yet been purchased. We have a contingency, but by Mr. Callis, it was purchased in some 10 or so years ago. And his intention was to use it as a commercial property, and then he learned he couldn't.
Thank you.
Because he has commercial properties across the street. Last sale was 95, actually 95.
Three years subsequent to it being demolished, what was on there previously?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody in the audience to speak in favor? Anybody in the audience to speak in opposition?
My name is David Anklees. I represent the Abbot of Derek Brown and Brett Emmering, and we have since the last hearing been afforded the opportunity to look at the new plan. I have no indication that a one or two, one is more preferable than a two, or two is more preferable than a one. But the applicant has been kind enough to afford us the opportunity to look at the plans in advance, has changed it from a side-by-side duplex to a single foundation, and our concern was that it was too close to our property. Now that they've put the driveway in between, and they've indicated that they'll give us an opportunity to get in and repair our buildings as needed, we can now support the applicant's
Hi, my name is Samir. I represent Lindy Dazepay, the owner of 10 Winter Street. And we actually haven't not shared any driveway with, if you look at the house, we are actually the house on the left, which is a three-family. And actually, the lawyer didn't mention anything about hardship. He didn't prove any substantial hardship. He didn't prove anything unique about topography, shape, or soil conditions. He didn't prove that his project is not substantially determinant, determinant to the neighborhood and also me. And if this, if he spends the money, and this is not a substantial hardship. And we also have three families, which they also said to us, if there's a house being moved next to us, they told us that they're all going to leave their apartments. And they've also been there for 10 years plus in the house. That's about it. And I don't think today, if you build anything, if I change a window and I call the inspector, he tells me that everything has to be done by code today, and nothing seems to be done by code next to the house.
Anybody else in opposition? Attorney Kelty?
If the board were to consider granting variance and then conditioning it, suggesting that it must need be a single-family home, then that is a permit that we would accept, and then I would, you know, my clients would need to discuss with the landowner, but that's their problem, you know, sale price. But at least if there is an opportunity to build something, then we're not dealing with an issue of no opportunity to construct anything on the property. I can't construct anything commercially, and I can't...
I think that's so different, Attorney Kelty, that you might have to withdraw and start again?
So now we're saying you can't have anything on that property?
Attorney Kelty, we'd be acting on your current application and motion. Not necessarily that you wouldn't be able to construct, but it wasn't advertised that way, and it would change all of the dimensions, the dimensional relief that you're seeking. Can't say how the board would vote on that. But I can say fairly comfortably that you would have to, at least in my mind, you would have to refile as a single family with that dimensional relief.
In light of that fact, then I would respectfully request that we withdraw the application without prejudice.
We need a motion.
Move to allow that the applicant withdraw without precedent, not precedence?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
Number two is also a continued hearing of Elizabeth Thomas, 55, Aberdeen Ave. You're not up yet. So we have something to be read into the record.
And we have to vote on that.
Right.
Letters dated June 4th, 2018. Attention, Carla McGrath, clerk, regarding the variance application of Elizabeth Thomas at 55 Aberdeen, Aberdeen Ave. Dear Clerk McGrath, this letter will serve to respectfully request the variance application of Elizabeth Thomas filed for 55 Aberdeen Avenue, Peabody, scheduled for June 18th. Be further continued to the September 17th meeting of the ZBA. In order to adhere to the board's suggestions, I'm currently on the agenda for the Concom meeting for July 25th, and there is not a ZBA meeting in August. Thank you for your anticipated cooperation. That's kindly Elizabeth Thomas. I think we have to move to allow the continuation request.
Favor.
Favor?
Sorry, sir.
Okay, we're all set. Number three, okay, Attorney Anklees, you're on.
Notice hereby given, the Board of Appeals, City of Peabody, will hold a public hearing on Monday, June 18th, at 7:00 p.m. at the Wigan Auditorium, City Hall 24, Lowell Street, Peabody, on the application of Joe Silva, Jr., care of attorney David Anklees, 246 Anneville Street, Suite 101, Peabody, for a variance from the provisions of the zoning ordinance 2017 as amended Section 7.2, as it applies to the premise known as 9 and 11 Davis Terrace, Peabody, map 76, lots 316 and 316A. The petitioner is seeking a variance to allow existing single-family home, Lot B, to remain as built, with relief needed to minimum lot area where 7350 plus or minus square feet are proposed, 15,000 square feet are required. Minimum lot frontage where 53 plus or minus feet are proposed and 125 feet are required. Lot width where 39 plus or minus feet are proposed, 93.75 feet are required. Minimum side yard depth where nine plus or minus feet are proposed and 15 feet are required. Minimum buildable lot width where 13 plus or minus feet are proposed and 40 feet are required. Relief is also needed to Lot C. Minimum lot area where 7660 plus or minus square feet are proposed and 15,000 square feet are required. Minimum lot frontage where 53 plus minus feet are proposed and 125 feet are required. Lot width where 39 plus or minus square feet are proposed and 93.75 feet are required. Minimum side yard depth where eight plus or minus feet are proposed and 15 feet are required. Minimum buildable lot width where 13 plus or minus feet are proposed and 40 feet are required. Properties located in R1A zoning district. This application and plot plan are available for review at the city clerk and Board of Appeals Office of City Hall, and will be available at the time of public hearing.
Thank you. Am I to understand that we have five members hearing this application? I have two additional copies of my presentation, if you'd like to make one available to each. My name is David Anklees. I'm an attorney with a law office located at 246 Anneville Street here in Peabody. I represent Joseph Silva, Jr., as he is the personal representative of his father's estate. The estate has title to number nine and number 11 Davis Terrace, the father's house and adjacent lot. Both were established by the planning board in a 1960 subdivision plan, with the plan being certified and recorded in 1961. I have attached, by way of reference, a copy of the subdivision plan to the application. Both the house and lot have been recognized and taxed separately as a house and buildable lot until today. For your benefit, Madam Chairman, I have copies of the two tax bills associated with I just wanted you to make, make sure that you had evidence of the fact that it was a lot that was taxed separately. This request is to allow the existing house to remain as built on 11 Davis Terrace and to allow a simple three-bedroom home to be built on 9 Davis Terrace with the dimensional relief requested. The simple three-bedroom home is 24 by 36, very modest by all accounts. Number 11 contains, lot number 11 contains 7,350 square feet, and number nine contains 7,660 square feet. If you look at the assessors' maps that I have supplied, you will see that both lots are much larger than almost all of the surrounding lots. You may also note that they are the only lots with the required setback on Davis Terrace as shown on the subdivision plan. That is a result of the submission pursuant to the formal subdivision control laws in existence in 1960. As stated, the proposed house is simple, 24 by 36, single-family, which fits perfectly into the neighborhood. I have a floor plan that's available if you wish to review it. Assessors and tax record indicate the vacant lot has been taxed separately, again, as a buildable lot for the last 56 years, since 1962. Again, it was subdivided pursuant to the subdivision control law with a 9 to 10-foot setback resulting in a loss of about 450 square feet of land for a 50-foot wide street that was not built. Not to be able to build as requested will result not only in... Not to be able to build as requested will result not only in the loss of the land that was involved in the original subdivision control approval, but also a financial loss for taxes paid over the past 56 years. It should be noted that the setback is unique to these two lots. No other lots in the area are affected by the construction of Davis Terrace. These two lots were the only two lots abutting Davis Terrace that were required to give up the 10 feet of frontage or setback along Davis Terrace. There will be no detriment to the public good. The house at 11 will be fixed up and the lot at 9 is larger than almost all of the lots in the area, and the modest home will provide additional needed housing. Approval for this request will in no way derogate from the intent of the existing ordinance. Approval will be in harmony with what presently exists. I ask that you request, I ask that you consider this request favorably and grant the relief requested due to the loss, the hardship cited, the uniqueness of the two lots as they relate to the other lots in the area, and the fact that this request is in harmony with the rest of the neighborhood and will in no way derogate from the appearance or layout of homes along Davis Terrace. Thank you.
Excuse me, Attorney Ankles, I think there might be an error. Nothing big, but on, on your application, under continuation, you say that the error was not corrected before Lot B was built on with a house and a pool. The existing pool, as shown on the plan, to be removed. I don't see a pool on Lot B.
There is, if you take a look at the plan that we have...
Yeah, but that's Lot C.
It's on, excuse me. Probably a typo, I'm sorry.
There is no pool on Lot B, you're talking about Lot C.
It's Lot C, I'm sorry.
Anybody here sitting to the left or right of me? Not yet? Anybody in the audience to speak in favor? In favor?
My name is Bruno Silveira, and along with my fiancee Isadora Sartor, we both own 15 Davis Terrace, the lot on, adjacent to the property, and we are in favor of this build.
Anybody in opposition? Anybody in opposition? Come on up.
Hi, my name is Maria Viera, and I live on 31 Proctor Street. So our backyards meet. My biggest concern is the water table for the area. My understanding is that the, when that house was built, that was like swamp area. So they build it up where the pool is. And I believe that there's a culvert that connects between Proctor Street that crosses over Davis Terrace and go, and drains into Driscoll Street. What happens is our backyards in Proctor Street are lower than that house. So when it rains a lot, the water collects into our backyards. And also Proctor Street's tendency to flood. So actually, my next-door neighbor, the yard will fill from the back and also from the front of the street and will be like a river flowing back and forth. So that is my biggest concern, what the impact will be on the water level.
Anybody else to speak in opposition?
My name is Ray Bencourt. I'm representing my mother, Maria Bencourt, at 29 Proctor Street. And the backyards are by the property. And on a heavy rainstorm, you can have anywhere from six to two feet of water in the back. As to say, we do not have a full basement, we have some crawl space, anywhere from two to three feet. And we have a pump going constantly on the rain, heavy rain. And if this happens, we'd like to know what would happen if one pump, which we're pumping into the back, would cover it.
Back up there for a minute?
No.
So what, what do you look at right now of these properties?
For looking at the backyard to the left, there's about 20 feet of their property in our backyard. So it's devised between the neighbor to the, to the right and the existing property. So in the middle, almost.
Where they want to build?
But it's not directly behind us. The existing house is behind us.
Attorney Ankles, what is Lot C now? Is it all grass? Is it gravel? Is there something there?
I'd like, I'd like to be able to respond and tell you what the existing circumstances are and what can be done to help or alleviate, if I may.
Would you answer my question first?
Yes, it's all lawn.
Okay.
It's existing lawn. We believe that the removal of the pool, which is a structure below ground, will help relieve any of, or not some of, any of the water table problems. We also believe that by constructing this house with a large French drain that goes around the house, gravel underneath, will assist in alleviating any of the possible problems that could be associated with the construction of a home. Again, you have a large pool, which is a below-ground structure that is taking up quite a bit of the absorption in the lot. There has been no problem whatsoever in the adjoining home, and we believe that we can construct a home with a large French drain that will alleviate and prevent any problems from occurring. Thank you.
So a French drain will alleviate water problems on the house that's going to be built? Correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't know how a French drain is going to alleviate any water problems for people that are rebutting it.
If it's built on, if it's built a little bit above grade with an adequate French drain and there's enough gravel that is placed underneath together with a membrane to prevent any seepage.
But that, that's, that's to alleviate Lot C's house and any water problem in Lot C?
Well, what it would do is would...
Want a French drain, everybody on Proctor Street?
No. I think, I think my experience has been that if the house is properly built and there's enough good gravel brought in and any, any, any loam or earth that is there is removed and good gravel is brought in, it helps alleviate any of the problems around the house.
Not going to argue with you, I disagree, but I get it.
Through the chair, to the attorney, do you know if there is actually a culvert that would go from Proctor Street to Driscoll Street?
We, I have no idea as to whether there's a culvert there or not, and I don't have any idea as to whether or not, we see no water flow on this lot at all.
Right.
So I can't, I can't say one way or the other as to whether or not there is a culvert.
The reason I ask is because when I was on the council, I believe somebody, there was an issue on, on Driscoll Street that I was in favor of, and there was a lot of opposition due to water, and come to find out that, to be honest with you, they were right. There's a water problem down there. There's no getting around that. Now, whether that is in the jurisdiction of the relief, I don't know. But she did raise a very interesting point to me to say that if there is a culvert, maybe the problem is that there's an obstruction in that culvert, that maybe if we had an opportunity to maybe ask the clerk to get in touch with Public Services to see if there is a culvert, and the last time the culvert's been inspected, and the last time that anybody's checked to make sure the water is actually going to where it's supposed to go, I mean, that would, that would weigh heavy on me to approve this, to say that, there's a water problem there. There, I, there's, I mean, I lived on Lincoln Road, I, you know, it's, I'm in the, I'm from the neighborhood, you know, so...
I certainly think that, if I may?
Yeah.
I certainly think that if you place a condition on this, asking us to have an engineer take a good look at it, at the lot, and do whatever is necessary to alleviate any water problem or alleviate, prevent any exacerbation of that problem prior to building, we would be happy to do that. We don't want to be put in a position where we're creating or enlarging upon or exacerbating a problem that leaves us open to liability. And certainly, we don't want that. And we would like to be able to build a house so that it, it does not interfere with anybody else. We'd be happy to accept a condition of that nature.
All right. So you, you, what I'd like to do is make a motion to continue until we can have that looked at, if you don't mind. I'd like to make a motion to continue, all right, if I could. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna move to continue to our next meeting and request that the clerk contact Public Services and find out if there is a location, if there is a culvert there that, that maybe could need attention, or if they could just report back to this, to this board, the condition of that culvert, and so moved.
If I may, Brandon, before we vote on this, Barry, I just think we want to be really clear and specific with our request. Do we want them to have an engineer's report submitted to us, testimony submitted at the next hearing? Or do you just want Attorney Ankles to come back and let you know what he found?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we have to get that formal. I would like to know if there is a culvert there, and if, you know, maybe the maintenance records from, from that culvert, from the city, and I think that would satisfy me.
We have to have some proof, not just, not just, yeah, we do and yeah, we don't.
Right, okay.
So...
And I also think it would be, it would be helpful if, when that is done, if you were to reach out to the neighbors who spoke here tonight before next month and let them know what you found out. I think it'll help the meeting run more smoothly next month for everybody. So now I think we can vote.
Yeah.
Second, Barry's motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We'll see you next month.
Thank you.
Number four, Leanne Conrad.
Notice hereby given that the Board of Appeals, the City of PBD, will hold a public hearing on Monday, June 18th, 7:00 PM, Wigan Auditorium, City Hall 24 Lowell Street, PBD, on the application of Leanne Conrad, 112 Lynn Street, PBD, for variance from the provision of the zoning ordinance 2017 as amended Section 7.2, as it applies to the premises known as 112 Lynn Street, PBD, map 109, Lot 288. Petitioner seeks relief from the front yard where 10 feet are proposed and 20 feet are required. Property is located in an R1A zoning district. The application and plot plan are available for review at the City Clerk and Board of Appeals Office of City Hall and will be available at the time of public hearing.
My name's Leanne Conrad, and I live at 112 Lynn Street. I'm here tonight because I'd like to rebuild my existing back entryway, which is a covered porch that was constructed of concrete, and I want to change it to composite decking. And then I want to remove the adjacent shed-like entrance that goes into the basement and instead put a first-floor bathroom with a bulkhead entrance. And the corner of the existing back porch is set back only 10 feet rather than the required 20, and that would essentially remain unchanged.
Oh, I see.
And the bathroom and the bulkhead is within the required setback for a side yard.
Oh, okay. No, that's nothing. Questions? Concerns? Anybody in, anybody to speak in favor? Anybody to speak in opposition? Matters before the board.
Move to close the public hearing?
Aye.
Move to approve?
All in favor?
Aye.
You're up. Thank you. Number five, Freddie Rodriguez.
Notice hereby given that the Board of Appeals, the City of PBD, will hold a public hearing on Monday, June 18th, 7:00 PM, Wigan Auditorium, City Hall 24 Lowell Street, PBD, on the application of Freddie Rodriguez, 60 Central Street, PBD, for variance from the provision of the zoning ordinance 2017 as amended Section 7.2 and Section 10.5, landscaping as it applies to the premises known as 60 Central Street, PBD, map 75, Lot 78. Petitioner seeks relief to the right side yard where two plus or minus feet are proposed and 10 feet are required. Front yard where four plus or minus feet are proposed and 15 feet are required. Accessory structure, left side yard where two and a half feet plus or minus is proposed and five feet are required. Landscaping where no streets are proposed and two street trees per lot are required. Property is located in R2 zoning district. The application and plot plan are available for review at the City Clerk and Board of Appeals Office of City Hall and will be available at the time of public hearing.
Good evening, my name is Freddie Rodriguez. I live in 60 Central Street. I'm proposing to convert the property to a two-family, and I submitted all the document and, and the variance, for the variance that I'm requesting. And I bought the property about two and a half years ago, and it was in pretty rough shape. And the reason why I'm requesting this variant is because I have two kids and I'm looking forward in the future to have them, you know, each live in one unit. And at this point, I'm having extremely hardship as far as keeping up with the, you know, mortgage and, and all the bills that come. We owning my first home. Does anybody have any questions? Oh, I'm sorry. It's my first time.
Just for the record, financial is not a hardship. Otherwise, we'd all have hardships.
Through the chair, are we, are we saying that the dimensions today are going to be the dimensions tomorrow, that's just a change of single to, because it says it's a pre-existing non-conforming lot? So I don't know what the... So are you, are you building something that has different size of, of things? Or are you building up, or are you building in? I don't understand the, the plans.
Everything is going to stay as is in the outside, just making changes in the inside.
Okay.
And I'm requesting the variance because I'm, I'm plus or minus two feet to the right of the property.
So you would be non-conforming no matter what you did?
Correct.
Okay.
And I own over 1,000 square feet of land for the lot required by the city. Yes, I did.
So are you basically here because you want your house to be legal?
Yeah, legal to, instead of the...
But the relief that you're asking for, the right side, the front yard, you're not changing anything?
I'm not changing anything. And I'm between two multifamily properties as well.
Anybody in the audience to speak in favor?
I'm Phil from 5 Buxton Street. I'm a neighbor of Freddie. I live, he's from behind me. So I'm with him. I agree. You're welcome.
Anybody else in favor? Anybody in opposition? Oh, the matter is before the board.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. I'll make a motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And number six, Thomas and Judith Sinclair, 22 North End Street.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the City of Peabody will hold a public hearing on Monday, June 18, at 7:00 p.m., at the Wigan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, Peabody, on the application of Thomas Sinclair, 22 North End Street, Peabody, for a variance from the provision of the zoning ordinance 2017 as amended section 7.2, as it applies to the premises known as 22 North End Street, Peabody, map 76, Lot 122. Petitioner seeks relief to the right side yard where .1 plus or minus feet are proposed and 15 feet are required; rare yard where six feet are proposed and 35 feet are required; lot coverage where 44.4% is proposed and 30% is allowed. The property is located in an R1A zoning district. The application and plot plan are available for review at the City Clerk and Board of Appeals Office, City Hall, and will be available at the time of public hearing.
Hi, my name is Tom Sinclair. My wife, Judy Sinclair. We are the owners of 22 North End Street. In August of 2014, we purchased 26 North End Street, the three family on the corner of North End and Dock Lane.
Speak a little bit more into the mic.
We've cleaned that exterior of the property up. Got all new tenants in there, good tenants. And in May of 2017, we purchased 22 North End Street, which was the eyesore of the neighborhood. We did a six-month renovation on it, with hoping to put the existing deck back that was totally rotted, and we tried to save it, but the whole thing come off the house. The inside, we gutted it completely, complete new plumbing, electrical, all-new framing of floors, complete renovation. So we're looking to get relief to put the deck back. And my property, like I said, is on the side-set 26 North End Street.
Through the chair. So the deck was already there, non-conforming, and it was torn down after you purchased it?
Yes, after I purchased it, yeah.
Through the chair. What's that new construction there now? I drove by, and there's some, obviously some works been going on outside. It almost looked like some new pressure-treated wood back there.
That's farming of stone.
What's that?
That's the stone.
Okay.
I cleaned that whole area, but it was like concrete, bricks. I just kind of made it all uniform.
Okay. Is that a stairwell that comes down that you can see from North End Street, over the fence? Is that...
What is that?
Was there a stairway that comes down in the back of your property?
Yes, that's the temporary stairway we had to put in when we moved in in December. Yes.
All right, okay. I will say you've done a lot of work there.
Through the chair. Couple of questions. The deck, what was the dimensions of the deck that was removed? Is it the same footprint?
Same footprint, yeah.
It was a 20 by 16 deck? And...
Stairway's a little different.
Okay. How do you anticipate constructing the deck? Are you going to have to go on to your neighbor's property on Dark Lane to build the deck where it's going to be up against the property line?
No.
Okay. You'd be able to build it from there?
That is my property.
Oh, you're the neighbor?
I'm 26, yes.
Okay. Is that, was it 26 Dark Lane?
26 North End.
Okay. But the driveway of the house to the right of 22 is on Dark?
That's on Dock Lane.
Gotcha.
That's my driveway for the three family.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments by the board? Hearing none. Anybody in the audience to speak in, looks like you're the audience, right? In favor?
I live at 2 Haskell Place, Arthur Parent. And Tom's done an excellent job down there cleaning that building up. There was a broken-down warehouse at one time. He gutted the whole place out. Now it's a home. Made a big improvement in that building over there, and I'm sure there'll be no problem with the deck. It'll be professional, blend right in with everything else. And there was a duck there at one time.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in favor?
Move to close the public hearing?
Or no, somebody else?
Oh, sorry.
My name is James Phillips. I live at 25 North End Street. I've been there approximately close to 70 years, and I have never seen an improvement in that neighborhood until Mr. Sinclair came in there.
If anybody was going to notice it, it would be you, right?
Yep.
Good for you.
And I believe that he should be rewarded for his labor.
Give him a couple bucks.
Thank you. Very good.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else in favor? Anybody in opposition? And we have some in favor correspondence that is going to be read into the record now.
Residents surrounding 22 North End Street, this is dated May 19, 2018. We're writing to inform you that we're replacing the back deck of our home at 22 North End Street. We removed it during reconstruction of the property and are now required to obtain a variance according to the regs of the City of Peabody. Please sign. This was signed by the owners of 1, 2, 1 and 2 Haskell Place, 16, 23, 25, and 26 North End Street, 2 Dark Lane, and 21A North End Street. A few of these people spoke here tonight in favor as well.
Okay, so nobody else in favor or opposition? So, my friend...
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
Move to approve?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All set. Good luck.
Move to accept the minutes?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good, okay, minutes are accepted.
Move to...
Okay, good evening.
Shut it down.
Shut it down.